Good morning. It is now about 9:02 a.m., April 7, 2020. I'd like to welcome everyone to our special call meeting this morning. As those of you that are here can see and those that are with us at home, we are in the confinements of our Swanee County Coliseum, trying to practice safe distancing and giving folks more room to spread out, feel more comfortable about having to come together and take care of county business. At this time, I've asked Commissioner Richardson to do our prayer and our pledge. If everyone will please stand.
Before we pray, I just want to remind folks who know the song, there's a song that says, begins by saying, "In this time of desperation, when all is dark, you help us see there is only one salvation we believe." And our faith is going to get us through this time. We just have to trust God to get us through it and do what we need to do to make sure that we keep ourselves safe. So let's pray. Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful that you love us. We are grateful that you are with us, and we are grateful that you've forgiven us of our sins so that we may be able to depend upon you. And Lord, we see our numbers rising here in this community and recognize that this is the direct result of sin in the world, where things start to decay and viruses begin and people die. Yet you have the answer for us. And so, Lord, we offer ourselves unto you that you may use us to be a part of the solution. As we make decisions here in this county, may we make them with wisdom and with common sense. May we ask of you your direction and depend upon you, believing that you will steer us in the right direction. We do ask for protection of those healthcare workers, those folks that are on the front lines each and every day, our first responders that have to respond out into the community for various things as well as this virus. We ask, Lord, your protection upon the families that are affected right now. I think each one of us probably knows at least one person who has either contracted the virus or even those who have died from it. And so, we ask God to bring healing, healing to our community, healing to bodies, healing to our economy, healing to our nation, and healing to our world. Thank you for what you're going to do. Direct us in this meeting, we pray, in Christ's name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As I've mentioned in the last couple of meetings, if anyone has a comment or if we as a board have a question for you, please don't speak from your seat. Please come to the microphone. I continue weekly to get in trouble about that, and I need to do better. So I ask you to come up when you respond. Also, when we're talking this morning, I realize we're going to have an echo problem in here and just maybe slow, as we're speaking, slow down a little bit where people can kind of understand what we're saying. With the video system, I want folks at home to be able to listen in. Our first order of business this morning is approval of minutes from our March 17, 2020 meeting and also our March 30, 2020, special call meeting. Do I have any questions or comments, or do I have a motion to approve? I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Gamble. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Moving ahead to our consent agenda, items 2, 3, 5. Do I have anything wishing to be pulled for discussion, or do I have a motion to approve?
Motion approved, Chairman.
I have a motion by Commissioner Fleming. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gamble. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Moving ahead to our general business, most of that's going to be discussing COVID-19. Mr. Walden, would you come up and give us an update?
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity to be back with you to give you an update. This morning, in the data that we received from the Florida Department of Health, there are 14,507 confirmed cases in the state. To date, there have been 260 deaths. Again, males are 52% of the confirmed cases, with females being 47% of the confirmed cases. The leading age group that we're seeing a majority of the cases are 45 to 64-year-olds, 30% of the cases, followed second by the age group 25 to 44-years-old, which are 31% of the cases. And then our third leading group are the elderly, 65 and older, with 25% of the cases. The 0 to 4-year-olds are still trailing at only 60, which that's still very encouraging. And then the 5 to 14-year-olds are only 94 confirmed cases. The leading counties in Florida have not changed. It's still Dade County with 4,941 cases, Broward County with 2,157 cases, Palm Beach with 1,102 cases, Orange County with 717 cases, Hillsborough with 582 cases, Duval with 510. In Swanee County, we currently have 32 cases. We had one lab result today that we will be announcing here shortly. It is going to be our first child. It's a five-year-old that has the confirmed case. We are doing our contact tracing at the moment to determine if it is connected to any existing cases. We do not believe it's travel-related, so we are doing that. Just so you can understand what we mean contact tracing, anyone that is positive, the Department of Health has to go through and get them to identify everyone they've come in contact with within the last 14 to 21 days. And you can figure, on average, one person will have about a minimum of 10 people that they've been in close contact with. So our role at the Health Department is to contact all of those individuals to identify, are you symptomatic? What was your contact with the individual? Where have you been? What have you been doing? You know, if you're a close contact, are you self-isolating? Are you staying home? So you can imagine, at a minimum of 10 people per contact, and we've got 32 cases, that's 320 people in Swanee County that we're having to track and identify and have conversations with. So I want to again, give a lot of thanks and appreciation to our team at the Department of Health for the work that they are doing. Because school is out, and as you well know, we have school health people in the Swanee County school system, and because I'm over the Department of Health in Lafayette County, and we have all of the school health personnel in the department over there in Lafayette County in the school system, or DOH employees, we've been able to repurpose them or reassign them temporarily to Swanee County to help us work on all of this. So I'm just very, very pleased of our dedicated team and what they are doing. To our neighboring counties, Columbia has 16 confirmed cases, Baker has 15 confirmed cases, Bradford County has 11, Madison has 10, Levy has 5, Jefferson has 4, Union has 2, Dixie has 1, Hamilton has their first case, Taylor has their first case. So far, we do not have any cases in Lafayette County. To date, 194 individuals have been sampled, and we have only had 32 positives with 162 negatives. We continue at the Health Department to screen those that meet criteria. We continue to work with our local doctors and providers. They're continuing to screen those individuals that they warrant screening that meets their criteria or meets the state's criteria. We continue to work with all of our assisted living facilities and nursing home facilities. We are in contact with them at least every other day, every two days. And what we're asking them are, are there any needs that you have? What's your census count? Do you have a lot of sick individuals in your facility? So we've been doing that from day one, having that dialogue and conversations with them. I would like to also point out and clear up some information. The Department of Health does not regulate nor license assisted living facilities or nursing homes. The Agency for Healthcare Administration is the regulatory and licensing agency for that. If anyone has a concern or a complaint, they need to contact the Agency for Healthcare Administration, or what they call AHA. That number is a toll-free number, and it is 888-419-3456. Or they can send an email to C-A-U@AHCA.myflorida.com. They can also search the agency website where there is a link and a portal that they could also make a concern or complaint on online. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the Commissioners might have.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Last week, Mr. Harris gave us a graphic, and it has jumped from those three cases, I think, to the 31, 31, 32 that you're talking about. I have a very great concern, I think we all do have a great concern, but I'm saying, I have a great concern that I see some of these businesses and I, you know, I don't know whether to contribute to the sheriff, whether it's being enforced. Mr. Harris, you're supposed, we're going to get with him. Y'all were supposed to have a team to try to shut some of these businesses down or these gatherings. We don't know, the unknown may be coming from some of that, I don't know.
Well, if I could interject, the reason you're seeing our numbers increase is because there are more people being sampled, there are more people being screened. And naturally, the more that you screen, the more that you identify having symptoms, those that meet criteria, then yes, you're going to continue, unfortunately, to see more positive cases. So that's why that number continues to go up. As far as businesses and individuals, we are still strongly begging and asking folks, please stay home, okay? Reduce the number of trips you make. Identify what's important. Do I need to go to the grocery store? Do I need to go to the bank? Do I need to go to the gas station? You know, make common sense decisions about you and your household and where you put yourself at. Please, stay home. That's the best way to get ahead of this. Stay home and isolate yourself. And that's what we're doing with the folks that are positive and the close contacts. We are firmly explaining to them the best way that they can help contain the COVID is by staying home. Just like me, I go to work and I go home, and that's about the only time I have for it. But now, I plan my trip to the grocery store, and what if I need to go to the gas station? That's the only places that I go. But I do that by choice because I'm wanting to help everybody else social distance ourself so that we can get ahead of this. And I know that we have constant conversations with the Emergency Operations Center, with the Sheriff's Department, with EMS, with state agencies. We're constantly talking about this, and we've been consistent in our message. Please, folks, stay home. If you don't have to travel, please stay home.
Thank you, Mr. Walden, for your comments this morning. Anyone else?
Chairman, we can hang out for a little while, but if it's okay, we may need to be excused. We've got a 10 o'clock phone conversation with Tallahassee.
Yes, sir, it's fine. You can go ahead and go. What you're doing is very important to the community, so I suggest you go take care of that.
All right, thank you. Y'all have my phone number and cell number, do not hesitate to contact me, and I think I've talked with all of y'all, so we're standing ready and available. If you don't get me, please leave your message, and I will call you back just as quickly as I can.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
We have quite a bit more discussion that we're going to have on different things this morning, but I would like to ask Commissioner Hale, I think he has a guest here, and I'd like for you to, let's go ahead, let him speak, and that way, if he has business he needs to attend to, he doesn't have to stay through the other part.
Absolutely. If you don't mind, just if you would just come over, I asked the manager from Lowe's to come in. I know there's been some questions of, you know, the amount of people that's out there and what's going on, and I would just want for you to tell us and tell our community what steps you guys are taking to protect our community from this virus.
So, thanks for having me.
Please, Mr. Chairman.
It's Justin. I'm the store manager of the Lowe's here in Lavo. So what we're doing, we've started practicing the social distancing, so we got in specific signage for social distancing. We've spaced our registers out six feet, so all the customers can get six feet apart. We are sanitizing our carts and all of the displays multiple times throughout the day to ensure the safety of the community. We haven't gone to limiting customers yet, but that's usually based off of square footage. And honestly, as a rural store, we're not getting the amount of customers that would take to reduce the amount of customers that we have in the store. We provided items for the associates to make sure that they're continuing to stay sanitized. This week, we're getting gloves and masks for all the associates in the store. We're getting sanitizing stations this week, Purell stations and things like that for the customers also. So we've gone to internet pickup curbside so that we can reduce contact with customers also, so that we can just take the product directly to the vehicle so that they can get the essential items that they need to keep their lives running.
Anything? Do I have any questions from the board?
Just real quick, you said you guys have not started limiting the customer basin?
We have not. So that's based off of the square footage of each building, usually. As a rural store, we are not seeing that amount of customer traffic, so it's like one person for every thousand, one customer for every thousand square feet.
Right.
And I'm checking that daily and walking the store during our peak traffic times to see if we're near that point, and we're typically not, close to 100 customers at a time.
And you do have adequate cleaning materials and things like that?
Yes, sir. We're getting extra shipments of that, so it's coming on our distribution trucks each week to make sure that we're able to keep everything sanitized. We're also disinfecting, every time a customer checks out, we're disinfecting the checkout area after each customer, and we're disinfecting the carts multiple times throughout the day.
I appreciate your comments and your concerns, and we have a lot of folks watching from home in different places via video, and I just think it's good for them to hear that, you know, that you're taking these measures. And also, I would ask, as things move forward, did you continue to monitor the, and if the square footage needs to come into play, you know, I please ask Lowe's to do that. We're asking all businesses to self-monitor, basically. I mean, we're all in this together, but if we have large groups, it causes an issue, and I trust that y'all are doing the right thing, and I appreciate y'all and applaud you for that. And you're, obviously, you're a big business in the community, so lots of folks go there and need supplies, and especially when they're kind of confined to home. A lot of, I mean, I've about done all the home projects I care to do for a year or two, but my wife keeps coming up with great ideas, so you'll keep seeing people there.
Yeah. And we've got the plan set up, so we already have some stores that are doing social distancing in bigger metro areas, or they're doing the customer limiting in bigger metro areas where they have a higher customer count. And we already have those plans in place for when, and if we do need to do that, we've got a plan and a setup that we can implement pretty quickly to limit the amount of people. We actually came out with an app as a company to count the amount of customers that are in the store at a time, so we've got all that in place if we do need to limit the amount of customers.
Awesome. Do I have any other questions, comments from the board? I would just like to thank you for being here this morning and give us an update. You're more than welcome to stay, but I know your time is valuable with what you're doing, and don't hesitate to leave if you need to.
All right, thank you, guys, for your time.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. This time, I'll turn it over to our county administrator. I think he has some comments and probably some questions also.
It is difficult to hear in this large building. Let me first give you an update. Commissioner Fleming asked about the little team that we put together to try to address a list of non-essential businesses. Let me first of all say that I think I speak for myself and everyone in county government and the Commissioners, that I believe and I'm convinced that every one of the businesses that are on this list are critical and essential to this county. But for the purposes of trying to address the coronavirus, we had to create a list of what we call non-essential businesses to try to be consistent with the guidance given by Homeland Security and the President and the Governor. So we met that very day, the day of our last board meeting. The sheriff, city police, several of us met over at the EOC, and we created a list. Mr. Prabhat had put a list together. He and I had been speaking a few days ahead of that, trying to put a list together. So we completed that list, and we circulated it. It's on the website. In fact, the county commission website has a link now to lots of information on COVID-19. It also has a list of those non-essential businesses, and it's up to the Police Department, the Sheriff's Department, to try to enforce that throughout the county, and I'm sure that they are doing that and trying to communicate with everyone affected by that as well. Also, on that page, Gabrielle Redfern volunteered to assist businesses with small business administration loans and information associated with that. We put her information on there as well, and I appreciate that because we need someone to try to field those calls, and she's taken that task on, and I'm sure at some point she'll be overwhelmed with requests for information. There's a lot of information online today. We have that information on our website as well. I think the Sheriff's Department has information online, and probably the city does. We sent that list out to the town of Branford. They're included in this as well. So that list was completed last week, and it's been in circulation. Commissioners, I want to just speak briefly because Commissioner Fleming brought it up again, and I passed out a copy of this. The schedule that I had prepared when we had our first discussion back on March 30 about the numbers of communities throughout the country that are seeing their cases, confirmed cases, double every two days. I shared with you that I got up early one morning and put this schedule together just as an illustration. And if you look at today's date, April 7, at that time, I had listed 32 cases, and that's what we have. And if you go back the last several days, you'll realize that we are actually following this schedule almost exactly the way that it's printed on this page, which means that we have to make a very, very serious effort to try to curtail the spread of this virus. These yellow signs that you see posted around this room today and on the table up front are signs that I worked with a company to try to produce a lot of signs. They'll be Core Class signs. We've got about 600 signs coming. A lot of these will look like yard signs. They're different than your typical red, white, and blue yard sign this time of year in an election year. Hopefully, they will stand out because of the color. We plan to circulate these around all of our major intersections throughout the county. We'll provide some to the city, some to the town of Branford. We have some large four-by-four signs as well in these same color schemes that I'll talk to DOT about allowing us to put on our major arterial and collector roads as well. It's unfortunate, but all of the experts that you watch on the news every day indicate that one of our biggest problems today is getting people to comply with this six-foot distancing that they feel is going to be the most effective thing that we can do right now to try to curtail the increase in the number of cases. We know that we don't have a medication that can fix this problem. We don't have a vaccine. We don't have the antibodies. We don't have anything to really battle this virus right now, except self-discipline and trying to encourage people to maintain this distancing recommendation. So we're going to be placing these signs up all over the county. I think we'll have a sufficient number of those that we can take to businesses as well, that they can post at their doors, they can post at the registers as well, and try to continue to encourage this. This is the only defense that we have right now, is signage. So that's one thing that we're trying to do that everyone can participate in. The other thing I wanted to, that I needed to ask you, last meeting, we talked about what we have recently classified as non-essential employees or positions in order to be consistent with the Governor's executive order and trying to have more people stay at home if we can. So we did that. I asked you last week to agree to pay those employees for another week until we can take a close look at what is available through the federal government to help assist in that regard. I gave you a copy of this document today with some highlighting on it, where the federal government has communicated through the U.S. Department of Labor, and in fact, it's already being implemented in the state of Florida, the funding that's being made available to those employees who currently cannot work or who have been sent home in order to try to minimize the spread of this virus. You'll read in there that under this plan that the federal government came up with, they're paying employees over and above the typical unemployment compensation, another $600 per week. I think everyone has recognized that that's more income than your typical employees receive anyway that are working in a lot of these positions. The question I have for you today, Commissioners, is are we going to make a decision to go ahead and utilize the federal funding for the purposes of paying these employees?
I have any comments from the board on that, their feelings? Obviously, as we move forward, a decision has to be made. I just...
What's the timeline of being able to apply and start receiving benefits? How long are they going to go between paychecks and...
I can't, I can't even, there's no one that has the answer to that question, and I've realized that recently. The only thing that they have established is a deadline that may be extended later. The deadline for this is, I think, July, I believe is what it said on here, would be the date that this ends, July 31st. But I know that they would need a letter. And Commissioners, let me just suggest something to you. These funds have been put in place because they, because the federal government recognizes that state revenues are going to be significantly impacted by this, which means county revenues are going to be significantly impacted by this virus. I would venture that we will not receive the same amount of state revenue five months from now, and when those numbers come out from the state, they're going to be reporting to us very likely that we won't receive the same amount of revenue that we've been receiving. The decisions that we make today to either utilize these federal funds for paying these employees to stay at home, or trying to use your local revenues that you have today, are going, that that decision is going to really affect us five months out. And I think the federal government recognizes that. They also recognize the increased needs that employees have, and I think that's why that $600 per week was added to the traditional unemployment compensation. was added to the traditional unemployment compensation. That's more income than your employees are currently taking in and you can't match that. I don't, I don't envision you being able to come up with that type of additional income. But the question is, are you going to use federal funds to pay these employees?
Did we get a answer back on the FRS and how it was going to affect those in the drop?
It doesn't affect them.
It does or does not?
Does not, does not. Keith Gentry with Finance Department, he and I both, we were taking turns just trying to get through to him and he finally spoke to him. He said it will not impact their, those that are in drop in FRS. Those payments are still going to be made by the state.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Just to clarify that, because that's a big concern of mine as well. When you say doesn't affect, doesn't affect their drop program or affect how and when they come back to work? I know there's some stipulations there as, if you were to leave employment and come back?
It, no, this, this isn't, traditionally, there would be an issue associated with no longer being employed by a local government and then trying to come back. But that is not the case now with the FRS and the pension plan and the drop program. See, my suggestion would be that we give these employees a letter saying that they've been laid off because what this provides for is a reduction in hours as well. Well, these people just, they are laid off. They're not working. Your other employees are working. Your other employees are being paid because they're showing up and they're working every day. This past week, you continued to pay the employees that we laid off till we could gather more information from the U.S. Department of Labor and the federal government. But the employees would not be unemployed. They would be, like this document says, sent home in order to try to reduce the spread of the virus and we would give them a letter that says that. My recommendation, however, would be that we continue to pay their health insurance, which is different than a lot of private sector employers can do right now. But I would say that we should continue to pay their health insurance even though they're not working. And just allow the federal government, if you choose to do so, to pay them the wages that they would, well, actually, in this case, more wages than they would ordinarily receive for whatever this timeframe is.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Fleming?
This would be to Mr. Harris also. So, the seniority, can you hear me pretty good? Can you hear me? Okay.
I'm trying to read your lips too, but go ahead.
I know that it is difficult, you know, because it's echoing like, but the ones, the employees with seniority, they wouldn't lose their seniority, no eligibility?
No, what I would venture is that, what I would venture is that as soon as this virus is gone or the risk has been reduced significantly and the executive order of the governor is lifted, that those employees will then go right back to the positions that they had before. This doesn't alter any pecking order or seniority or anything of that nature at all. The big difference today is that they're at home instead of at work. So, the question really is, I think everyone agrees that they have to have an income. The federal government has said that they will give them the income during this time.
Okay.
Question is whether or not we agree with what the federal government has done and desire to allow the federal government to pay these employees during this timeframe. I'll just say to you as well, I mean, you think of the people who have called you that are on that non-essential business list in this community that don't work for the local government. That's what those people are doing today. They're trying to tap in and take advantage of the, out of absolute necessity of the funding that's being made available through the federal government. So, I guess the question is, are we going to do the same with these employees or are we going to do something different than that?
Have some more comments from the board?
Obviously, it's not an easy decision, but we do know that over the next six, eight months, 12 months, that our revenues are going to significantly reduce. In the upcoming budget year for the legislation, I had spoken with our past library director and the state aid to libraries has been cut significantly, specifically to Swanee County in the coming year. So, I don't know if anybody's had a chance to look at that, but that's all going to be significant factors going into the upcoming budget year. The only holdup I have on this is the gap in time that they will have to go without a paycheck between the time they stop receiving one from us to the time that the federal aid kicks in. I know a lot of them still have annual leave and sick leave. If, if we allow them to use that, does that make them not eligible to apply for this during the time they're laid off?
Well, I think that, I mean, traditionally, it would, it would only apply for the timeframes that they're, they're not going to be able to use that and in addition to that, use the unemployment compensation. But I think for the period of time that they're applying with the letters that says that they've been laid off, we can speak to the issue of utilization of annual leave and sick leave that's on the books until such time that this kicks in. And I'm confident that the administrators of that, this particular program are going to recognize that we do have people that have vacation leave, annual leave on the books that are going to be utilizing until this takes over and substitutes that other limited source of income. And I'll just say this as well, you know, we have encouraged in our policies and the, and the policies that this board has adopted over the years, we've encouraged employees to keep annual leave on the books and sick leave on the books. But you have a, a percentage of employees who never have and never will bank any of their annual leave or sick leave and then it isn't available when they need it. It's unfortunate, but this county commission, the city council, the state government, the federal government can't fix that.
No, but I, I wasn't trying to address that issue.
Yeah, it just can't be fixed. So, I would say that...
That's a personal responsibility and that's, that's on each individual.
So, you've got employees that have adequate amounts of time to help cushion this timeframe between the time that this, they can apply and get approved for the funding from the federal government.
The only thing I was going to suggest, if, if we can continue to pay out the annual leave to bridge the gap, that if some of them want to take a 40-hour payout or 60-hour payout upon the layoff, that we do that so that they have some revenue in the bank to sustain them. But I recognize that paying people indefinitely is not gonna, is not going to work in the long term for us. So, this is an issue that we need to address.
Well, I agree. I'll, I'll just give you an idea. The actual numbers that we're talking about are $126,000 per month. I don't know how long we're going to be doing this. I don't know if we get to the end of 30 days and the governor is going to extend this for another 30 days. It's going to have everything to do with whether or not we've started altering the rapid increase in the number of cases. So, we could be dealing with this for two months. It might be three months. I don't have any idea. But in any event, I do know that it's about $126,000 per month. And if the federal government can pay those, that amount of money to these employees, we're better off in the long run. Everyone is, even those employees. Because like you said, when we come back and we're dealing in five months with anticipated revenues from the state, I think we're going to see those numbers diminish dramatically. And if we can change some of the things that we're doing today to try to affect that...
It's, it's a fact on state aid to the libraries, we are going to see a reduction. It's in the budget.
Right.
All right, fellas. This is what you get. This is why you ran for office, to make tough decisions?
Yeah.
Just, just to recap, though, so we, we agreed at the last meeting, I know, to pay our libraries employees through this Friday? Was that correct?
It was through the end of that last week and then through this week to the, to the end of this pay period. Or, or through, no, excuse me, through the end of this week.
Through the end of this week. Okay.
Because there's two weeks in a pay period.
And our finance department has spoken to someone in Tallahassee that the retirement system, the drop, nothing would be affected there whatsoever.
That's what he told me yesterday morning.
And, and not being ugly, but I mean, is it just a phone call or we got an email? We got something written?
I don't know if he has it in writing.
I, I just, there's so many uncertainties out there is why I'm asking. I just know there's not many provisions that have been made. I know everybody's jumping as fast as they can to try to come up with.
Well, let me just...
It changes every day. I understand that.
Let me, let me share this with you. The drop payments that are being made into, in a, any employee that's in the drop program, the payments are coming from the state for contributions that were made before.
Typically, the last five years.
Before they ever entered into the drop program.
That's correct.
So, when you enter into the drop program, you're officially retired. You're allowed to continue working for another up to five years. But the payments that are being made are for work that was already performed.
Right.
Not for work that's going forward after you've retired.
That's correct.
So, the benefit with the drop program is that you are already collecting. It's just being put into an account, your pension payments, which are not going to be affected by the work that you do going forward. You're just being allowed to continue to make income with your local employer that's a part of the FRS system.
Well, I think that, I think that was the question that we were trying to address last week with a different agency.
Right.
Was that if they were laid off and employment was severed, that under the FRS rules, they couldn't come back. They weren't eligible to come back to employment for a year.
That's been waived.
Okay.
That has been waived.
That's what we wanted to know.
Okay.
Because I think that was...
Matter of fact, they were encour, they were encouraging bringing back some of the state employees just like that to man some of the call centers and other things like that and just waive that requirement.
Well, that was the question we were putting into representatives in, in Tallahassee last week was to find out if they were going to waive that, that year requirement. Because if you laid somebody off for a month and then started trying to rehire them to get back to full operations a month later, you, you had that blocking and, and you couldn't get an answer.
We aren't taking them off of the books though. Their employment isn't being severed. They've just got a, an elimination of the work hours. They're still going to be on our books.
Right.
There's a difference between terminating employment and what we're doing and what other state and local governments are doing.
Commissioner Richardson?
How many employees do you, have you identified that would be affected by this decision?
I don't have a head count on them. I, I just get the information on the total financial impact. When I met with them at the library, if I had to speculate, I'd say there's at least 40.
Mr. Chairman, another question.
Sir?
Is this only affecting Swanee County library employees or is this the regional?
No, Hamilton and Madison as well.
I know in Madison County last week, it seemed like Ms. Betty brought up the fact that they were utilizing their library staff over there? Or were they just utilizing the library, their EOC?
If they have personnel that are working, then they would continue to work because they're working in a different capacity today. They're actually helping disseminate information on the COVID. So, if they're keeping them employed for that different purpose, then this would not affect them.
I understand it's a painful decision for the board to have to make, but I think we need to, to look at, move forward with it. I know nobody wants to do it, but we're requiring it and asking it of our private sector. And we talk all the time about partnership and if we're going to ask them to do something, I, I don't see why we wouldn't ask it of ourselves. I hate it for our employees, but, you know, and definitely it can't go on. So, we have to look at it now or later.
And, Mr. Chairman, I, I agree with what you're saying because I mean, I'm struggling with it with, in, in my bus, two businesses now. It's decisions, hard decisions I'm having to make on both hands. I just want to make sure that we're, we know what we're talking about when it comes to their livelihood and their ability to survive and, and come back to work and not lose anything. But that's all I'm trying to ensure. I'm trying to do that personally and for the county, so...
Mr. Commissioner, Chairman, and Commissioners, I'll, I'll just tell you that that decision sits right here. And I plan to bring every employee back unless something outside of our control affects that ultimate decision. It's my belief that this virus will be under control at some point, that we will have whatever's necessary to keep our people safe. But it's absolutely my intent to bring it back, every one of them.
I, I would just like to say, uh... Trying to think of the best way to word this. I understand we're in a tough situation here, trying to make a decision that honestly, myself, now, Mr. Harris is probably more comfortable with it, but I, I don't know that I have all the answers to all my questions. And kind of like Commissioner Hale saying, I, I don't have a problem with trying to do this. But I'm not in support of just cutting their payoff right now. I don't know if we do it for another week, another two weeks, as we give them opportunity to transition and to do the applications that's necessary and also understand some of the questions that you had. If it's 100% accurate, I, I'm just opening this for discussion is all I'm saying. I don't, I... Basically, it's the pleasure of the board in your direction. That's just my thoughts. I, I want to, I understand everybody's suffering. I understand we have businesses that aren't able to operate and I understand these folks are, we have to treat everybody, everybody the same when they can't operate the businesses. I mean, and, and we have non-essentials that we can't. But I, I do want to try to help them the best way we can by being physically responsible. I guess is what I'm saying.
And just to elaborate on that, some of the, and I think you had mentioned, Mr. Gamble, what the time was to get from point A to point B. And I understand for many things, one week to six weeks. I mean, it's just, I know they're overloaded. And again, we, by the time, it could possibly happen, uh, you know, if we go through with this, by the time they start receiving the check, the ban can be lifted and we, we, we go back to work, you know?
Looking for the crystal ball again.
Yeah, exactly. Yep.
I, I, I mean, I think that too. I, I just, I don't know those answers. I wish I did.
Well, we're currently in, in the middle of a payroll this...
End of this week.
This week and then next week. Do y'all want to carry it through this payroll so that we, we have a full payroll and discuss it again at the next meeting? Maybe everybody have their questions answered by then?
I mean, I would, I would definitely be in support of that. I think maybe a few more things will come to clarity. You know, I, I know, I know it's a little bit of kicking the can down the road, but I, I just want to make good, sound decisions. I don't want to...
Mr. Chairman, can you, could Commissioner Gamble repeat what he said? Because I couldn't quite understand it all the way down there.
I couldn't understand what you said.
I figured so.
I didn't either.
I said, could he repeat what he was in support of? I couldn't completely understand everything.
I said, since we're in the middle of a payroll, the payroll goes through next Friday or this coming Friday, that we just approve another seven days from Friday and discuss it at our next meeting. And maybe that, by that point, everyone can have their questions answered.
With that, with that being said, I don't, I don't see a problem that if the board's leaning this way, that why these folks shouldn't take direction and go ahead and try to fill out the application.
They're not going to be able to.
Without the form from our...
Because you've got, as long as you're paying your employees, they can't apply for...
They have to have that form saying they've been laid off because of this reason.
They won't qualify.
Right.
As long as they're...
Yep.
We're, you know, this...
If they have a date certain in the future that they will be terminated or not terminated, but furloughed or laid off?
We can inquire of the state and try to get a response from the federal government. I don't know that they will pledge unemployment compensation on a forecasted event may happen in the future. happen in the future. It's designed to qual- an employee only, or a person that's not working qualifies when they no longer have an income from an employer. That's really the essence of it. It, it isn't any more than that. I know that you're struggling with this, and I struggle with it, but here's the reality. Government is a reflection of the private sector. How many private sector employers out there today that we know of have laid off forty employees and are still paying their wages going forward versus what the federal government has provided in unemployment compensation and this additional six hundred dollars per week? I can tell you, there aren't very many of them out there. A lot of them that I've spoken to have struggled. They have reduced their workforce down to a bare minimum and just trying to pay that minimum workforce going forward. But they're not paying the entire workforce. Some of them did for a week. I've spoken to a lot of them. So it isn't an easy decision. It would have been easier, in my mind, if the federal government had just sent us the check and said, "Look, guys, if you have to lay employees off, we're going to cover that income for them." That would have been much easier. In fact, I would have preferred that, but they didn't set it up that way. So it may be a cumbersome process, but it isn't a process that we created. It may be difficult to apply, but we didn't create the system that's in place. And while I recognize that, and I've thought about all of these scenarios myself, employees that have annual leave, can use their annual leave up to the time that they apply and are approved, but the system isn't designed to even function that way. They have to be no longer receiving that income from their employer to qualify.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Harris, can we treat the, uh, the last amount like we're talking about extending a week on payroll? Can we treat it as a lump sum payment that doesn't affect unemployment? As, in other words, we have a cutoff date, but then there's, there's a lump sum that, that, that carries them through a certain amount of time, almost like a severance, but it's not severance, because in this case they're furloughed. Uh, is, is there a way that we can get money in their bank accounts so they can handle the next, uh, two weeks? So then go ahead and get their unemployment benefits filed and still have a date of, of furlough?
The answer is no. You can't prepay employees under the, your budget system. You can only compensate for hours worked. We don't have that luxury that some employers have where they could give them like a bonus check or something, lump sum, and say, "Here, let this carry you for the next week or two."
You have to give hours worked, or they have to sell back time, annual leave recently.
And, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Ju- just, there, there's other agencies that are doing this, other entities, should I say, state government that, you know, some of the employees were concerned about it as well. I just want to put this out there, because I've had a lot of conversation, discussion with family members, employees and things of that nature. A, a lot of them, after they sat down and looked at it, I, I think, Mr. Harris, you said it earlier, i- it was going to be a, an, a raise to them, so to speak, during this time.
That's right.
I, I think the issue is that timeframe that Mr. Gamble was concerned about, as I am and all of us, is to get on, to start receiving that. Uh, and again, of course, the, the retirement was a big deal. You did say, I think you guys in early in conversation said it would, you would allow, or we could allow them, if they had any PT time or vacation time to, to use during?
They can use it until it's gone, but they're not going to qualify for unemployment compensation as long as they're-
As long as they're receiving that.
They've got a source of income coming in from their employer.
I got you.
Well, that, that wasn't what I was recommending. If we set a date, but end of, by Friday, you know, we're going to lay you off, that you allow them, if they want to sell back forty hours. So then they, they have a lump sum come in of forty hours worth of annual leave.
We could, that we could do. We could allow them to sell their annual leave that's on the books.
And that would be their choice whether they wanted to or not, but it would, if it went a week longer than they thought, or two weeks longer, they would have a little bit of a cushion there.
Correct.
And if they burnt their time and didn't, weren't personally responsible, then I, I can't help them there.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I was just, just sitting listening and, uh, I hate to see anybody don't have a, a paycheck. Like you say, it's a tough decision. Some agencies across the state, they gave it a emergency, giving eighty hours. I know we can't compete with the state. They gave eighty hours of emergency, but now it's federal. They call it federal hours. If, when you take forty hours, that's, uh, Commissioner Gamble was saying, you do, if you sold the forty hours, it's going to take long, all those hours to go. You know, that's eighty hours is two weeks. Forty hours is a week. Um, I have a question. If they're off, can they, or will they be getting time accrued, the time that they're off, off from work? No?
Time only accrues for hours worked, because that time is a gift. And we're only given that gift if, if they're working. We addressed that before, because you had people that were abusing a lot of their sick leave and wanting to continue to accrue while they were out. And we'd catch them out fishing and doing other things. So we fixed that.
This can, this go back to when you abuse your time?
That's right.
No one expected this.
That's right.
You know, the unknown, no one expected this to happen, including myself. I, uh, I have quite a bit of time, but still, I, you know, no one knew that it was coming. It caught us all off guard, but it's, it's put us in a situation, a tough situation. And, you know, families got to, they, they got to eat, you know, especially with the little children and stuff. So, uh, um, Mr. Chairman, I don't know. I want to do what's best for the community, what's best for our constituents, our community, um, the way we all benefit from it. I don't want to starve anybody.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I, I keep emphasizing this question, because I really, I, I think it just encapsulates the whole issue. We all want the employees to have an income. The question is, is the federal government better suited at this time to provide that income? Or is the county? That's the question.
I will say also, as we move forward in the next couple of weeks, uh, you know, the stimulus that they're trying to put in place, far as the federal government should be coming forth, and obviously no, no one knows the dates that that starts getting in folks' hands, but I would hope for the next few weeks. So that could also, I'm saying, even if they apply and get the unemployment started, that they would also be receiving the stimulus check in addition to the twelve hundred dollars is what I'm speaking of.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you just said, last part of that. They won't, they're not going to be able to get a check from both us and the federal government.
No, sir, I'm not saying that. I'm saying the twelve hundred dollar check from the federal government-
The stimulus package.
Would be coming in, in the next few weeks is what.
Right.
I'm saying that would be in addition to what they're, when they're trying, that may help bridge the gap of, of the unemployment starting.
Right.
Them receiving that, you know, but obviously no one can put a timeframe on when that's going to-
That's correct.
Get to folks. What's the pleasure of the board? Do I have a motion of any, of any direction moving forward?
Yeah, real quick, I, I don't know if we, I think you guys, uh, when is, where are we at in the pay period right now?
We'll be in the middle of the pay period by this Friday. Actually, it would be Sunday, but typical work week is-
So we'll be halfway through the pay period?
We'd be in the middle of it.
Be right in the middle of it.
It's a two-week pay period, so this would be the end of the first week of this pay period, by the end of this week.
So what do you guys think about finishing out the pay period and moving forward at that time? That would put you closer to twelve hundred dollars that they may be receiving? They can use their, uh, time, if they have any?
The end of the pay period would not be this Sunday, but the following Sunday.
Correct. That's correct.
That'd be correct.
That's correct.
So basically they're forgetting.
And that'll give them time to start researching and, and looking up and-
Absolutely.
Having a game plan of a go day.
I, I would be in favor of that, Commissioner Hale.
So finish out the pay period with the option to sell back leave time? I'd be in favor of that.
If you're going to make a motion, just include that. That's what we'll do. We'll go ahead and make those plans so that they can sell their annual leave if they choose to do so.
Would they continue to work, um, through the remainder of these, or will they be furloughed or at home, um, receiving this pay?
I, I didn't understand what you-
Would, would they be, if we, if we begin the process and put a deadline, or, or a date of, of effective furlough, basically, of, of next week, the end of next week, um, and, um, I hope that I'm hearing this correctly, because there's a lot of echo back and forth, but, um, if we put that date down, would these employees, are these employees already at home, number one?
Yes.
Okay, so they're basically being paid out through the next, uh, two weeks. Why would they utilize any, any sick time?
They're not going to utilize, they won't be allowed to use sick time if they have annual leave on the books.
Or sick time, I mean, or annual leave, I'm sorry.
Annual, if they have annual leave on the books.
Yeah.
They will be able to sell that. They're just going to get paid for that lump sum for that annual leave in addition to the rest of this week and next week with a regular paycheck. So those that have annual leave on the books will be able to sell that annual leave, be compensated for it.
Annual leave or comp time? Don't they have some, have comp time on the books?
We don't pay for comp. Comp time is something that you don't write a check for.
I know.
There shouldn't be a lot of that on the books anyway, particularly with the library. You're not going to have comp time like you would in other cases where you have a lot of people that are called out later.
Can they utilize some of their comp time?
Pardon me?
Can they utilize some comp time?
I don't think they're going to have any comp time to utilize.
All right. Everybody understand that?
My understanding is that we would pay them through the end of next week to end the pay period. And for employees that have annual leave on the books, they will be given the opportunity, if they choose to exercise it, to sell that annual leave and receive a check for that.
That is the motion.
Okay.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hale. Do I have a second?
Second?
I have a second by Commissioner Gamble. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same as- Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Chairman, I've, I've got a couple of other things that I could share with you if you like. One, I have reached outside all of the traditional channels to try to find some supplies. We're still looking for sanitizer. We've got some of that coming. Um, one of the people that I've, and I've, I've called very large business people that I've been familiar with for years, that have the ability and staff to try to research and track things down, that I just don't have the staff to track down. I got a call this morning on the way over here, um, where there is a possibility of, um, respirators, uh, being able to obtain respirators, um, and gloves, uh, medical grade gloves, and maybe some more sanitizer. Um, and I'll let you know if that occurs. We've set some money aside to try to make those purchases. I know that Fire Rescue has orders in, and I don't have any idea when anyone's orders are going to be filled, but whoever's order is filled first, will just go ahead and make that purchase and they can get it to the appropriate department or personnel that needs them. So we've got people working outside the county that are trying to help us find what we're looking for. I've been online, I tell you, these days, it's difficult to get anything else done, just trying to keep up with the changes and what's available and trying to address needs. Um, we're going to be talking to the healthcare providers in the community, trying to find out what type of inventory they have on a lot of the critical items and how we may be able to help facilitate, um, the requests for additional, uh, equipment and materials going forward. Uh, because I know that they're stretched as well. They don't have the staff to try to keep up with that task. And, uh, we can try to facilitate best we can in that regard. One other thing I want to mention to you, and there were, I guess, multiple conversations I had yesterday with different, uh, individuals that we work with, is, um, excuse me, a possibility of procuring non-congregate housing. Um, this has been provided for, uh, through FEMA and under the emergency orders, the typical procurement policies have been waived, just like our, under our local state of emergency. If we have first responders that are exposed to the virus, um, that get to the point where they need to have non-congregate housing so that they're not taking this back to their homes, FEMA has provided for that. We have an opportunity to rent space, um, on an as-needed basis with the anticipation of being reimbursed for that. So I just wanted to share that with you. I've got a stack of paperwork and a lot of forms that I've read through, but we'll be working on that as well. My hope is that we don't get to the point where we need that, that it is available, uh, through a process. And we'll follow up with that and go ahead and try to submit all the paperwork, do all that we can to have that available if necessary. Commissioners, the numbers that I cited on that schedule on March thirtieth are absolutely reflecting the worst-case scenario that we anticipated at that time. And we've got to be prepared to do all that we can do. Um, and any of the latest greatest ideas that come out of the state or federal government, we need to be able to employ those decisions locally. And, uh, I want you to know that we are doing all that we can right now to keep up with everything. Sharon over at the EOC is doing a magnificent job. Uh, I thank everyone that's participating in the Sheriff's Department, Police Department, City of Live Oak. Um, I haven't communicated as much with the town of Branford, but they have our same list of non-essential businesses and the Sheriff's Department, I'm sure is working now there as well. Um, so we're going to do everything that we can and keep everyone informed to the best of our ability on, uh, the latest ideas that are coming out of state and federal government and try to employ those as quickly as possible.
Is that all you have for us?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Do I have anyone from the public wishing to speak or have any questions? See you tonight. We'll have some closing comments from commissioners. Do you have something?
Yeah, I was going to say, I mean, I, I know we got a lot going on, but I know Mr. Norris is working hard on our census. You want to come up and speak to that, sir? Seen some things out over the weekend that popped up on social media.
Uh, yeah, well, we're, uh, definitely working on the census real hard right now, uh, since we've got some extra time.
Since we've got some extra time, some of these other projects are not moving forward. Plus, we're trying to put a positive spin on it since maybe folks are at home. They could really help Swan County by, while they're at home, giving them something to do, and that is to go online and fill out the census, or if they've received the application in the mail, they could fill that out. Obviously, just like with the rest of the world, all of our plans were turned upside down. The fair, the festivals, everything that was canceled. So we've been hitting social media real hard. You guys, if you go to the economic development page, you'll see we're putting posts out constantly. We, just yesterday, partnered with the school system, and we sent out enough census information and items for the children, for three thousand students. We worked really hard to package all that up last week, and then we went and loaded the buses yesterday morning, and it all went out yesterday. That is for Live Oak and the town of Branford as well. I did notice, I want to give a shout out to Mr. Pravat, he's supporting over there with the census bracelet on. I'm pretty sure everybody should have got one of those. If you don't see me, and we'll get you some. But what we're doing is we're doing a lot of outreach. You'll see flags around town. We have flags, these tall feather flags that are flying that say Swan County Counts 2020. We are moving those throughout the community. We were in Diamond Park last week. Mr. Carter put it out in their newsletter, and we actually went down and gave him some information. We were down at the Filling Ford last week as well, meeting with Ms. Laura down there, doing what we can. You know, she's putting lunches out. So what she agreed to do was to put our census card in their little lunch bag when they came and, you know, picked up their lunch. So it is, it is difficult, obviously, but it is important. As we recover from all of this, we're going to need those federal dollars. The schools are going to need it, you know? The fire department's going to need it. I mean, our roads are going to need it. We're going to need it. So I know it's difficult times for everyone, but we don't need to let this lag. I mean, we really need to take this serious, and I think people have the time right now. It'll give them a sense of purpose to help. We are behind right now, I will tell you that. I get updates every week. We are behind the Florida average and the national average on reporting. And somewhat concerning is we're only seeing about fifteen percent of our reporting that's being done online. We're seeing in other communities, which are probably larger communities, you know, fifty, sixty, seventy percent of theirs is being done online. So that, what that's telling us is people are waiting to receive the application in the mail to fill out and return. Well, I'll let you know, I've not received one yet, which is pretty ironic. So if people don't receive it and they don't know they can go online and do it, then they're kind of falling through the cracks. We do need your help, Ms. Fleming. She's a wonder. Obviously, we're communicating through video conferencing, we're still trying to meet and do what we're doing, and we're doing a ground roots level campaign, just like you guys are familiar with. We're on the phone, we're calling individuals, we're calling churches. I think the mayor left, but he's been, he's been an awesome help too. We, we have to get in touch with these people some way, and we got to get them to fill it out. How many people have filled it out? Anybody? Fill it out? Where's me a head count? Oh, that's better than I expected. You guys, everyone counts. Every single piece counts. So we're working, we were, an idea we had, and if you have ideas, please share it with us, as we met with all the banks. We asked them to, now everybody's going through the drive-through, as you're going through the drive-through, to put information, you know, into the carrier that goes, goes out to the people going through the drive-through. So we're trying some of everything, and, I mean, we're, we're working it hard, and we're seeing results. It's just, we've got to pick up the pace if we're going to, if we're going to improve upon that number we had ten years ago. So, are there any questions? Anything? We do have materials, so if you guys, you know, if you know anyone that we can share with, we're constantly reaching out to anyone who can help us. And again, it'd be great if we could put all those library people on the phone, call people in the county, telling them to do the census or to help us, but that was a big part of our plan. We were setting up for the libraries, for people to come into the library, and Ms. Betty was working with us to have someone sitting there so they could come in and they could help them fill this out, because some people aren't comfortable with that, you know? So that, we took a big hit when the libraries had to shut down as well. So it's, it's tough, but we're going to keep fighting. We've got a little time, the next several months, so.
That library will be back open before you know it. We'll get everybody, get back going and
We are.
Make this focus.
And it's, 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 it's one of the biggest pieces because some people just aren't comfortable, and may, or maybe they don't have a computer at home. Maybe they don't have access to the internet. That gives them a point, and that was a big emphasis for us. That got kind of removed, so.
Thank you, Mr. Norris.
Has the deadline been moved out?
No, we were told they were not moving the deadline.
Okay.
We were just yesterday on a phone call with the Census Bureau, and they, they do not intend on, because of the, it's mandated that that count has to be done this year, so, and so their deadline has not been moved.
They need to do the Constitution.
Yes.
Are they still moving forward with their door-to-door and all that?
They do not have an answer for us. She told us yesterday that it may be delayed or it may not happen at all. The concern is for small rural counties, if you don't respond, to, to give you an idea, you know, we were at seventy percent ten years ago. Twenty percent of that number, in other words, fifty percent, about fifty percent self-reported filled out their census. About twenty percent was actually taken in by the enumerators that went and knocked door-to-door. If that doesn't happen this time, think of the hit we're going to take. That's why it's important now that we get people to self-report, that we help share the message, that we put it out there. Take five minutes, you can do it on five minutes. I mean, go online, fill it out, you're done. And you can help Swan County as we recover from this. So that is, it is a big issue, though. If they're not able to go door-to-door, and that is a big concern, it could really hurt. Because your urban areas, you'll already see that most of them are doing it online, and their response rate is really high because they're not waiting for stuff to come to their door, they're not waiting on those enumerators. So we, we, we need all the help we can get, guys, to let people know it's important, so.
Thank you, Mr. Norris.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Closing comments, Commissioner Richardson?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said. Closing comments, that's all I got.
Any closing comments?
Uh, no, I don't, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Fleming?
I would just say, be safe.
Thank you. Commissioner Gamble?
I just, I want to thank everyone in the community and the board. These are tough times and tough decisions. I hate those decisions that we have to make. You know, I was talking to someone yesterday about it, and a lot of decisions goes, flies in the face of a lot of the things that we stand for. But I see the community stepping forward and, and a lot of times, beating the county and the state, the federal government to the punch on actions that need to be taken. I've seen the social distancing in several stores before it was mandated, where they had barriers of separation devices. Nobody likes the decisions that are having to be made. Nobody likes what we're having to do, but I thank everyone for stepping up and helping be a part of the solution, even though it's, it flies in the face of what we naturally want to do and how we want to live. Heard someone on the radio today say that ninety-nine percent of the people are doing what they're supposed to be, it's that one percent that's giving us a problem, and I tend to agree with him. So I just, that ninety-nine percent keep being a good influence and a positive reflection of what we need to do, maybe that one percent are getting line. Very smart man I heard on the radio this morning, by the way.
I don't know if that's a comment or... Commissioner Hale?
I, I would like to say as well, I've seen a lot of our community, businesses, individuals, churches, just, just, it's a great time, but it's a horrible time. I just, I love to see what the community's doing and trying to help each other, and I just want to applaud you guys for that. This board, I'd agree, couldn't agree more. It's a very difficult time for us, and I just hope the community and our citizens know that we are in uncharted waters and we're navigating through it the best that we can. So please know we're doing all that we can. And the other thing I say is just keep praying there's somebody who can fix this, someone more powerful than anything. Don't forget to lift it up in prayer. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hale. I just echo what the board has said. Commissioner Gamble was, leading up to, I went to the radio station this morning and just talked a little bit, and nothing about any major update other than just, we appreciate this community, we appreciate what they're doing. I truly have seen that they are heeding the warnings and, and staying home, and that's what it's going to take to make a difference, and that's what is going to get us to that curve faster. It's the more we do on our own, the faster we can get there and the faster we can get back to normal. I've said before at times, I know y'all don't believe this, but I've made mistakes in my life, and I made one a couple of days ago. And that mistake was, is I come up with a great idea to have the meeting at the Coliseum, and I'm going to have to change that next week because we just can't hear. And I wanted to do it where we could get spread out, but it's, it's, it's just tough when you can't hear what everybody's saying, and I'm afraid that some of our video for our home viewers, it's going to be tough for them to understand, so I will get creative and come up with another solution next week and try to do a little better where folks can hear. I just want to reiterate that I appreciate our first responders, our, all those folks that's out on the front lines fighting this thing, all our medical personnel, I mean, those folks are having it, go in there knowing that they're going to be with someone that has had this or this possibility of having it, and they step up and, and go fight for us. And that's, that's heartwarming to me. As we move forward, we're going to get through this thing, but the one way we're going to get through it is as the community is together. We all have to work together, and we're doing that, and I'm seeing it happen every day more and more. I want to thank each one of you for that. Keep spreading the word. I have a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Got a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Fleming, got a second by Commissioner Richardson, a second by Commissioner Fleming and Commissioner Hale. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.